Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for May 2nd for those items that have been duly published on our agenda. For those people in the audience who have not come before this board before, just as a brief synopsis, we will be calling for the petitioner or their representative to make a case with regards to their proposal. We will then turn around and ask for anyone who wants to speak in favor, anyone who wants to speak in opposition. The commissioners may or may not ask questions, at which point in time when everything is said and done, the public hearing will -- after all the petitions have been read, the public hearing will be closed and then we may move into administrative session where we may or may not undertake and take up the petitions that have been discussed this evening. For the record, Commissioner Gibson is not able to be in attendance, and I believe it's Commissioner Clary's turn, alternate Commissioner Clary's turn to sit, so alternate Commissioner Clary will be the fifth member of the voting board. With that having been said, the first item on our agenda, I will turn to Mr. Lewellin and ask him to read the first petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item tonight for the public hearing session is 151-153 First Avenue. It's the petition of James H. Gelder seeking a coastal site plan review and variances of section 4.2 of the front setback requirement of 20 feet to 17 feet 7 inches and 8 foot 6 inches and a variance of the overall lot coverage from 25% to 27.55% for the conversion of a two-family dwelling to a single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. The noted hardship is granting of variances will eliminate the non-conforming multifamily use, tenant parking, and onsite dumpster.
Thank you. Is the petitioner or the representative present? Right, the attorney, not at the podium?
Trying to undo my glasses here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of James H. Gelder, owner of property at 151-153 First Avenue, Stratford. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and two photos of the sign, which was posted by me on the property. Now, the first three exhibits in your file, which I've just handed to you, are photos of the existing house taken by me today. First photo is from the front, at the corner, you see the front and the side of the house. Second photo is the side of the house on Ocean Avenue. And the third photo is a picture of the parking area, paved parking area, to the rear of the house, on the rear portion of the lot. Now, it's important for you to know that this is a two-family house. It was constructed in approximately 1928 as a two-family house by the Jacob Brothers, who at that time owned what I used to call a junkyard in Bridgeport, I believe it was on Seaview Avenue. And one of the Jacob Brothers lived on the second floor, one of them lived on the third floor, so this house was built as a two-family house prior to the time that the zoning regulations existed in the town of Stratford. So, once those zoning regulations were enacted, this was a legally conforming, legally existing, excuse me, non-conforming use. My clients have owned it since 1978 and have continued to use it as a two-family house. Now, I have submitted on behalf of my client an application for variances and a CAM application in order to renovate and convert this non-conforming use to family into a single-family residential home in an RS4, which is a single-family residential zone, at this address. This conversion will eliminate the need for the tenant parking lot, which is in photo three, and the existence of a dumpster, which is also onsite. Specifically, I'm requesting variances of the front setback requirement of 20 feet to 17.7 feet on First Avenue and 8.6 feet on Ocean Avenue, and a variance of lot coverage from 25% to 27.55%. Exhibit four is a copy of the proposed site plan, and please note that I have highlighted in yellow on this plan an area which shows the elimination of the dumpster, the removal of a two-story porch to the rear of the house, the removal of the asphalt parking area on Ocean Avenue, the inclusion of a proposed 18 by 36 in-ground pool, and the addition of a two-car garage. Now, exhibits five and six are architectural renderings of the proposed house. Exhibit five is a color rendering of the first floor of the house, excuse me, of the front of the house, which will be on Ocean Avenue, and the -- which will be on First Avenue, excuse me. And the second page is the color rendering of the house as it faces Ocean Avenue. Exhibit three, exhibit six, rather, is a full-blown copy of all the architectural plans in full detail. And what this shows is complete renovation of the first floor, the second floor, and the third floor. An elevator is going to be installed. The third floor is going to have a large grate room, which will overlook the water. The elevator will facilitate access to the third floor, obviously, for people my age. And my client is anticipating to spend between $1 million and $1.2 million in doing this renovation. It's a substantial, expensive renovation, which is going to enhance, obviously, the value of the property, which is currently appraised by the town tax assessor at $508,500. So this appraisal and associated assessment is going to go from $1,005,000 to $1,750,000, probably. Exhibit seven is a copy of a letter from the Stratford Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, in which Bill Rock, the chairman of the commission, indicated that the commission approved a motion to find the application consistent with the harbor management plan with the understanding based on information provided by the applicant that the proposed project will result in significant improvement in existing stormwater conditions on the site, provided the project meets all town requirements for stormwater management, the so-called MS4 regulations, which all new construction projects in town now have to comply with. Exhibit eight is a letter from DEEP, Land and Water Resources Division. Please note, oh, by the way, on the harbor management commission letter, I've highlighted in yellow the language, the requisite language that I just quoted at the bottom of the first page. Exhibit eight is the memo from DEEP, and I draw your attention to page four of the staff comments, which I've highlighted in yellow, where the DEEP representative says they have no comments or concerns noted at this time. Furthermore, on page five, the staff recommends that the application is consistent with all applicable coastal policies. And I've highlighted those comments in yellow as well. Now, I want to discuss the issue of hardship and Dan's administrative comments. The hardship claimed by me in this submittal is that the granting of variances will eliminate the non-conforming multifamily use, tenant parking associated with the multifamily use, and an onsite dumpster, also associated with the multifamily use. In his administrative comments, Dan explains the details of the applied for variances and indicates that, quote, "The proposed application is consistent with the type of development seen in the RS4 zone and somewhat typical for this neighborhood." He goes on to state that the applicant would be eliminating a non-conforming multifamily use, which is not permitted in the RS4 zone. He, meaning the applicant, will also be reducing the associated tenant parking area and replacing it with landscaping, and will be removing a dumpster use for the multifamily dwelling. Variances, and this is Dan's quote, "Variances have been upheld in several cases in which the courts have found that a significant reduction in existing nonconformity would be less offensive to the surrounding residents." The applicant's justification does appear to qualify as a legitimate hardship per Connecticut law. And in that regard, I'm going to submit a copy of the Hescot case, Hescot versus the Town of Stonington. I'm just going to hand in one for the record. Alex is familiar with this case. The gist of this case is consistent with Dan's comment. That is, when you are reducing an existing nonconformity and going to another less intense, more benign nonconformity, that qualifies as a substitution for having to prove a hardship. And because we fall into that category of eliminating a significant nonconformity, even though we do need a few minor variances, we do qualify under the Hescot case and the cases mentioned in Hescot, a couple of Supreme Court cases, Adelson, and I forget what others, but they're all in here. So, for the record, I will submit the Hescot case. Accordingly, because the requested variances would result in an expensively renovated single-family house, which would eliminate a previously existing nonconforming multifamily use with its associated exterior dumpster and tenant parking lot, and because this requested renovation would have no adverse impact on coastal resources and is consistent with the harbor management plan, I would ask that this application receive your approval. I have with me this evening my client and the architect who prepared these plans, in case anyone has questions of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Knott. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kellerman.
Yes, I do have a question. In regards to the setback requirement, which is 20 feet, is it 20 feet on both sides of front and the sides?
Yes.
It is.
A corner lot has two front yards and two side yards. It does not have a rear yard. So, when looking at this site plan, we've got two streets, therefore, this is a corner lot, so there's a 20-foot setback on Ocean Avenue, and there's a 20-foot setback on First Avenue. We're asking for 17.7 feet on one and 8.6 feet on the other.
So, the 8.6 is what I'm questioning. What brings it to the 8.6? Are you changing the structure of the building, or is it just the addition of the front porch?
No, it's just the porch.
It's just the porch?
Yeah, just the front porch.
That's bringing it to the 8.6?
That's correct.
No additions to the side of the house towards Ocean Avenue?
No, correct.
Okay. That was my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? Mr. Wutham.
And what is it currently?
What is what currently?
You want to make it eight points, the setback, you have it, you want to bring it to 8.6. What is it now? I can't really read this, sorry. Small.
Yeah, let me see. It looks like 23.16 now, as to First Avenue, and 15.3 as to Ocean Avenue, currently, the existing house.
Currently sits at 15.3. It currently sits at 15.3.
15.3 as to Ocean and 23.16 as to First. And I have the architect here, and he can explain the rationale for the porch, if you would like. There is a legitimate architectural rationale for the porch. Dan?
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear that, because that's the biggest issue that I have with, you know, I love that it's going to be conforming now and all that, but that's really, you know...
This is Dan Pato, the architect who designed this.
Yeah, Daniel Pato, Pato Architects, 2490 Blackbrook Turnpike, Fairfield. So, behind the windows, it's just like a big window in the front of the house, that's centered on the living room. And then, really, just what we wanted to do is balance the size of the porches on both sides of that, so it would be symmetrical. So, we wouldn't have three different lengths of porch. It's kind of as simple as that, really.
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Ms. Stulley. I was, the existing house is going to be torn down?
No, no, no. Just renovation.
All exterior renovations, except for the shallow walls, which will be renovated for the architecture.
Yeah, I realize that.
The house is getting torn down.
Okay, because I, so the existing basement and everything is the same.
Instead of regular staircases going up straight, there's going to be a circular staircase in the middle.
Yeah, I saw that in the plan, but I wasn't sure. Obviously, it's quite a dramatic change from how the house currently looks.
Well, that's because we're moving, you know, we're changing it from a two-family to a single, so there's a lot of changes.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, it's a lovely, modern design versus, you know. Okay, I thank you for identifying whether it was being...
I would just like to make a comment rather than a question. This is beautiful. This is beautiful and can only enhance the neighborhood. I mean, I believe Mr. Gelder did a lot of work on the way the house looks now, but, hey, everybody deserves a garage, you know? I think it's gorgeous, and I, I wouldn't mind having it in my neighborhood.
Okay. Any questions, additional questions from the commissioners? Any questions? If not, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rob Marks.
And your address, please, sir.
120 Washington Parkway.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I have lived at 120 Washington Parkway for 39 years. My property is adjacent to 151-153 First Avenue. I am here in opposition to the application for relief from zoning regulations for this property. The applicant is seeking variances for relief from section 4.2, required lot area dimensions, yards, coverage, height, to exceed maximum building coverage and to extend the house into both required front yards. The zoning application explains the hardship as follows. Granting of variances will eliminate the nonconforming multifamily use, tenant parking on the site, and the need for a dumpster on the site. In fact, no variance is required to change the use of this building from multifamily occupancy to single-family occupancy, and none is being requested, as this is simply bringing the occupancy type into compliance with the underlying RS4 single-family zone. Similarly, no variance is required and none is requested to reduce the amount of parking on the property. And no variance is required and none is being requested to relocate trash bins on the property. The truth is, the requested variances are unrelated to the stated goals in the public notice. Instead, the proposed variances seek to increase the building size and coverage, which have nothing to do with occupancy, parking, or the location of trash receptacles. These variances seek to make one of the largest houses in our single-family neighborhood even larger, while simultaneously adding an accessory structure and a swimming pool, which will collectively exceed maximum allowable coverage. The proposed expansion of this house to within 8.6 feet of the Ocean Avenue property line and to within 17.7 feet of the First Avenue property line will reduce visibility at this prominent and seasonally busy corner property, fronting one of the two exits from the Stratford Article 21.1 of the Stratford zoning regulations states that relief from the zoning regulations may be granted in the case of hardship, where a little, literal enforcement of such regulations would result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. And while simultaneously, the regulations say that the zoning board of appeals must take due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the community, the applicant has not demonstrated exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. The proposed expanded building footprint and proximity to public streets has the potential to reduce visibility and thereby decrease public safety and welfare rather than enhancing it. This property is gently graded, significantly larger than the minimum required lot size, and comfortably above the FEMA base flood elevation. There are no adverse conditions uniquely associated with this property, not also affecting the general district, which would require the requested relief. The existing house at 151-153 First Avenue was one of the oldest and largest houses in the neighborhood, and already violates current zoning regulations with respect to building height and setbacks. The applicant seeks to further increase zoning nonconformity by further reducing the front yard setbacks without evidence of hardship. The applicant seeks to further increase zoning nonconformity by increasing site coverage beyond the maximum allowable coverage without evidence of hardship. I urge you not to approve this application in its current form.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition of this petition? Please come forward.
I'm not sure if I was in opposition, I just kind of wanted to see what it's going to look like.
Attorney Knott, can you be of assistance?
Yeah. I live next door.
There you go. Oh, yeah, you got it, you got it.
So, what would be the setback to...
The porch, so you have this porch, right?
No, for me.
But where do you live?
Behind the parking.
Oh, it wouldn't affect you at all, because we're talking about the corner of the house right here.
The side. Okay.
Okay.
I mean...
What's your name? You got to give your name.
Gail Ganey.
Oh, I told you.
Could you, yeah, could you just speak into the, name and address for the record?
Gail Ganey, 260 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, it does look like a nice house, but it is also the largest. Okay.
For the record, please let it be stated that the individual just wanted to have a better understanding of what the applicant was proposing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition? Speak in opposition. Hearing then, the chair will entertain a motion.
Rebuttal, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely, Attorney Knott.
Having to do with the comments made by Mr. Marks, I agree with him when he said that no variances are required to convert this house to a single-family, and no variances are required in order to eliminate the parking lot, and no variances are required in order to eliminate the dumpster. The problem is, nobody in their right mind would eliminate a two-family house unless they could renovate it into something as spectacular as this. So, he's right in his technical analysis. We don't need variances to convert it to a one-family house. The point is, it's not going to get converted to a one-family house unless we can renovate He also mentions the fact that this was the largest house in the neighborhood. Yeah, it is. It was built in 1928, before any of the houses in the neighborhood were there. There were no zoning regulations at that time, having to do with setbacks, size, coverage, or anything else. He mentions the swimming pool in relation to the coverage issue. Swimming pools do not count towards building coverage. Decks do, garages do, swimming pools don't. As far as the hardship issue is concerned, we do not have a hardship. I mentioned that in my presentation to you. But we do have the law on our side, and I handed Judy a copy of the Hescot case, which articulates what the law is in the state of Connecticut regarding the reduction of nonconforming uses. And when you reduce a nonconforming use with another BZ application, which has more benign nonconformities, the Connecticut Supreme Court and the Connecticut appellate court says that substitutes in lieu of a hardship. So, we're fully within the law here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question for you, Barry, just real quick.
Certainly.
If this is okay, right?
Oh, absolutely, I was going to ask.
Couple times mentioned height, they're not changing the height of the house.
No, no.
Okay, that was, okay, that was it.
No, he mentioned that the house...
Because the house is already too high as it is. Okay.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions?
I do again. I'm sorry, I know the, it says proposed garage and proposed pool, and the pool may not be done right away, but is the garage going to be...
No, I think the garage is going to be done immediately.
Okay.
And the pool will get done, I mean, it's going to be, I don't know that the pool's going to be done before the renovations to the house. That would be crazy to have...
But the garage isn't...
Yeah, the garage will, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close public hearing on this item.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Lewellin. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wutham. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. That is the only public item that was on the agenda for a public hearing, so at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move, Mr. Chairman, motion to close public hearing.
Moved by Commissioner Lewellin.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wutham. Discussion on the motion. Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. We're now off the record at the public hearing. It's 7:27, now going into the work agenda for the administrative session. First item on the agenda is vote on items listed on the public hearing agenda dated May 2nd, 2023. The chair will entertain a motion. We have one petition on the table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to take 151-153 First Avenue off the table.
Do we motion to take it off the table for discussion? Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Kellman. Discussion on the motion. Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. We're open for discussion.
I'd like to first say that I drove by the property last week, and it is a beautifully large home, and I was quite surprised to see that somebody wants to make this a beautiful one-family home, and it's going to be a spectacular home if it's approved. The only concern was that side setback, but knowing that it's only just a little bit of the porch that's impeding into what's already existing, I have no concerns with that. There's been issues when I was in the board in the past where, you know, sightline from corners are a concern, and that was my concern, that they weren't bringing the structure of the building any further to Ocean Avenue, but it's only so much of a porch which won't impede the turn of the turn, of the corner, I mean, you know, as far as that. That was a big concern of mine. But other than that, I think if it's approved, it'd be a wonderful asset to ownership.
Thank you for your comments. Additional comments or any motion to either approve, deny, or table?
Quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Is it within our purview as part of a ZB analysis to look into sightlines, additions, subtractions of parking?
Yes. Quantitudes public safety.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, it's definitely within our purview to do so.
That we're not overstepping on zoning. That having been said, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the variances for 151-153 First Avenue.
We have a motion to approve...
I'll second that. Sorry.
That's right, citing the applicant's case of, we'll call it a hardship based upon the legal documentation that had been submitted, so we have that. We have a motion to second. Discussion on the motion.
I'll second that.
Hearing then, it's seconded by Commissioner Wutham. Discussion on the motion. Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll now move on to item number two, the approval of the minutes of the April 4th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve minutes of April 4th, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Mr. Lewellin. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wutham, just technically. Motion by Mr. Llewellyn. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Witham, just technically. All right, some, well, unfortunately, you're not eligible to vote at this meeting, so.
Okay, I'll second. I just.
Okay, I have to have one of the five sitting commissioners other than myself to make that motion. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Corrections, omissions? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. CAM Site Plan Review. Mr. Brennan, do you want to discuss 151-153?
Yeah, 151-153, first. Their coastal site plan review has been reviewed by the state. As Attorney Not stated, they had no comments or concerns on the application. In their report, their findings were that it was consistent with all applicable coastal policies.
Thank you very much for that input. Having said that, a motion to approve would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the CAM Site Plan Review for 151-153 First Avenue.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn. Seconded by Commissioner Neary. Discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously. We have no erosion or sediment controls?
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Members' concerns, comments. Hearing done. Other items? Hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Llewellyn, seconded by Commissioner Witham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously. Off the record at 7:31. Thank you very much, and have a good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.